Council, little cook, please call the roll.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostick. Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Cersei.
Yes.
Great, well, welcome everyone. We are meeting a bit earlier tonight at 6:00 PM to welcome Montgomery Housing Partnership.
Recording in progress.
They're going to be doing a presentation this evening for us. As a reminder for folks, and I'm sure the folks from Montgomery Housing Partnership will let us know this, but they are the largest nonprofit owner of affordable housing in Montgomery County. And in particular, in the city of Tacoma Park, they own nine large apartment complexes with over 420 units in total. In addition to the housing, MHP provides educational support services for residents, children from preschool to middle school through their community life programs. And they do a number of things, and we're very glad to have them as a partner in the city. In particular, tonight, MHP is going to talk about the Hillwood Manor Apartments, which they purchased in 2016 from a single landlord as part of a three-property acquisition. When the property was purchased, it had over 500 housing code violations. MHP were quickly to bring the property up to code, which we're very thankful for. And since that time, they've been working on assembling the financing to do a badly needed substantial rehabilitation of the project. The rehabilitation is expected to start this November and continue for 18 months. Given the size of this property and how important it is, we wanted to have MHP with us today to go over the plans for that. So we're grateful for Artie Harris to be joining us and Stephanie Rudman. And I think unless Jessica, you have something else to add, I'm just going to turn it over to Stephanie and Artie, right?
Sounds good.
Okay, then you all can take it away.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you, Mayor and council members for inviting us here this evening to talk about our exciting rehab plans for Hillwood Manor. I think I've met most of you before, but if not, my name's Stephanie Rudman, as the mayor said, and I'm a senior project manager and legal counsel for MHP. I've been with MHP almost 15 years. We also have Artie Harris, Tacoma Park resident extraordinaire and vice president of real estate at MHP. Artie's been with MHP over 12 years. Artie, if you want to say.
No, 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 you, this is, Stephanie's the project manager, and she's going to go over the project in detail. And just why I would say is, you know, it is, it's really important for me, this project, because now I am, because I'm a citizen of Tacoma Park and know how important this is, and I go by this property all the time, either my bike rides. And so we were really excited when we were able to buy this as well as two other owned that were owned by Kathy Bernard in 2016. So we met with the residents before we purchased the property and, you know, we told them what we were going to do. They were skeptical because of how the state of the property, but we live up to our promises. It was a lot of hard work to get the financing, because Stephanie will tell you that there's so much that needs to be done. But we're there now and we're ready to get going.
Great, thanks, Artie. So I think Kate told you, I think everybody knows about MHP, that we are the largest support nonprofit affordable housing developer in the county, and we have over 2,075 units in the county and neighboring jurisdictions. And we own nine complexes in Tacoma Park with over 420 units. So we have a lot of ties to the city. And we don't just, we don't just do the bricks and sticks. We have our community life programs that provide programs to resident children, to neighborhood children, and programs to our adult residents like resume writing. And then we also have our neighborhoods group, which works in the communities by providing certain support services. And they've been instrumental in the Long Branch Business League and giving the flowers on flower and green clubs. And so this is how we really work in the communities with these three, this three-pronged approach. So let's see, can I share my screen? Is that okay? Okay, so I have some very basic slides that I'll just share. So, everybody see that? Okay, so this is just my MHP slide, and this is just to remind you of what Hillwood Manor looks like in case you're not sure which project it is. There's the sign that you can see off in New Hampshire. And the next slide, I just want to tell you, this is, this is my agenda, so you know where we're going. So I gave a little introduction of MHP, talked about MHP's history with Hillwood. I'll do that, and then we'll go into these other, these other areas. So as the mayor mentioned, we purchased the property in 2016 as part of this three-property acquisition. We've been working a lot over the last couple of years to put together the rehab, the rehab plan and to gather up the financing. It's complicated, as all of our affordable housing projects are, but as Artie mentioned, I think we are, we are almost there. The next thing I want to talk about was just the resident and the unit composition and the relocation during the renovations. Because I know that's something that the city gets involved in and that the mayor is already kind of involved in from the tenant point of view. So a little background about Hillwood. So Hillwood is a 96-unit building. It has 15 entrances and six individual buildings. It's a complicated site from the renovation perspective. Right now, it has 79 one-bedroom units, one-bedroom-one-bath, and 17 two-bedroom-one-bath units. After the renovation, we're going to have the same number of units, the same total 96, but we're going to have 75 one-bedroom-one-bath, 18 two-bedroom-one-bath, two three-bedroom-two-bath, and one four-bedroom-two-bath. We were able to take advantage of some of the unused ground level space and expand some of the existing units, which we can do by right. So we're increasing, we aren't increasing the number of units, but we are increasing the number of bedrooms by eight. And something we're excited about is the larger units. You know, these are really hard to find in the county, the three and four-bedroom units. And so we're, we're really excited that we could pull these together. The project also currently has 10 project-based Section 8 units. And we recently applied to HOC under its competitive RFP process four, and we were awarded, luckily, three additional project-based Section 8 units, which are going to be vouchers, which are going to be applied to the three and four-bedroom units. So in this way, oftentimes, these large families who need these big units, they can't afford them. So by having the voucher on units, we'll be able to ensure that the families can pay for that, because they'll just be paying 30% of their income. So that was a great thing. In addition, there are a couple tenants that have Section 8 vouchers, which ebbs and flows based on the tenant population. That's about three months ago, we stopped leasing up the property to minimize the number of residents that have to be temporarily relocated during the renovation. So we hired a very experienced and professional relocation company called Housing to Home. They're out of Boston, and they have quite a number of projects in the DC area. And they're going to handle the relocation of the tenants while the work is being completed. Right now, we have about 10 vacancies at this point. Because of the extensive nature of the renovations, people can't be in their unit. So one thing we've had to do in addition is we have to income certify everybody at the property because of the financing, because it's being financed with low-income housing tax credits. And that requires that everybody is under 80% of area median income. So there are three people at the property who refused to income certify. We've tried numerous, numerous times, and they're refusing. So we have been notified, we've notified them in writing that they can't stay at the property. And we will be providing them benefits under the Uniform Relocation Act, which we are required to do, one of which is relocation counseling, helping them find alternative housing. And then we also are responsible for paying for their moving expenses. Now, relocation companies already discussed these benefits with them. We also have four families that were over the 80% of area median income requirement. And so these families also are not able to stay at the property. And so we are working with them, holding their hand. In addition to the relocation counseling and moving expenses, they also get rental housing payment as defined under the Uniform Relocation Act, which is a calculation based on the difference between their current rent and a comparable rent for 42 months. And so we've been discussing all these benefits with them. So I'm just going to go a little bit more, and then I'll stop and take some questions, and then we'll move on. So the project is being completed in four phases. So the tenants, as I mentioned, are going to have to move out, they're going to do the extensive nature of the renovations, which I'm going to get into that shortly. All the units are going to be gutted, so there's going to be, you know, all new pipes, electrical, there's going to be nothing, nothing left. So the tenants are going to be relocated at our expense, both onsite and offsite. So some tenants will be able to stay if we have enough vacancies, and other tenants will go to nearby apartment buildings. So the relocation company has interviewed every tenant about their needs. So for example, do they have mobility issues, they need to be on the first floor, do they have a car and need a place to park it? Do they work in DC and they would prefer to live downtown for a while? You know, do they have children that are in school and they need to be near the school? So we're responsible for finding them a temporary unit. And while they're out of their unit, the tenants will continue to pay their same rent regardless of what type of unit, regardless of, you know, whether it costs more or not. So their payments will continue to be the same. Also, all the Section 8 tenants are going to stay onsite, because this is a hard requirement. So those people will be staying onsite. Each phase is approximately six to eight months long, and two phases are going to overlap at the same time. So, and next topic is construction plans and renderings. But if anyone has any questions before I get into that, I can take questions now, or we can do it at the end.
I'm not seeing any hands raised, so why don't we continue?
Okay, okay, great. So the next part is kind of the exciting pretty pictures part. So as I mentioned, we have this extensive renovations. And we've been working with the architect, Minor Feinstein, and with the contractor, Zito Construction, for over two years on the plans. Unfortunately, every, every system is failing. So I'm just going to highlight some of the scope. And I'm going to probably go into more, more detail than you find interesting, but so you can stop me if you get to a point. But the biggest thing is the boiler system that's there. So the boiler system is, is failing, and it's constantly needing repairs. And so we're taking out the old boiler system, and we're installing high-efficiency split system, heat pumps with thermostats, so with fresh air intake, so everybody gets their own HVAC system, and they can control it. So that's, that's super exciting. We're removing the radiators that are on the exterior walls, and so we have to insulate all the exterior walls, which is tremendous expense. But I find that's the best thing to do, so we don't get mold. We're creating four accessible units at the property. Right now, there are none, and so we'll have four handicap accessible units and two for the hearing and vision impaired. Throughout the units, we're going to refinish all the wood floors. You know, we're obviously painting with, you know, VOC paint, new doors, new hardware, new lighting for everything, all-new plumbing. So we're replacing all the sanitary sewer pipes in the building. And outside, we're repairing and relining certain pipes depending on what they need, what they need. We did camera all the pipes outside from the street to the building, and most of them, most of them need to be replaced or relined. And then every unit's also going to have individual water heaters. So they will be controlling their own water, which we also find is a very green system. The bathrooms will be gutted, they'll have all-new, you know, flooring cabinet, toilet van, everything's low-flow, ceramic tubs. And the one big thing is that currently there are no exhaust fans for circulation, and so we've got a lot of mold. So they'll have exhaust fans that head to the outside. The kitchens also will be gutted, so brand-new cabinets, solid surface countertops, floors, ranges, microwaves, all-new Energy Star appliances. And then in the common areas, so right now, there's a non-accessible leasing office, and we're going to create an accessible leasing office and community room. So I will show you. There's about MHP. So this is the community room, this is a rendering of what the community room is going to look like. And this is another, another view of the community room. So we think this will be like a hub for the residents, and where we'll be able to provide programs for the tenants. You know, usually what we do is we'll put out a survey of all the residents and find out what their needs are, what their wants are, and then we'll tailor the programming to the particular tenant base. Are there a lot of children, are there a lot of single parents, are there, you know, more elderly? And so we can see what kinds of things they need. So we hope that this will be a place where people can come. It also will have Wi-Fi, people are going to have their own Wi-Fi. So, and this rendering just shows, so here, let's see, this is the community room, and next it is the management office. So that'll be nice if the property managers can, you know, keep an eye on the community room, if there are events happening there. So just getting back to that, the common areas, so, you know, we're going to have all-new lighting in the stairwells, we're also going to have an access control system. So you won't be able to get into the building without a hub. And then we will have some cameras at the entrances, both in the front and the rear of the building. So the building will be more secure than it is now. Also on the exterior, let's see, there's a lot of masonry, tuck pointing, repairing retaining walls, canopies, signage, concrete, new, new roofs, landscaping, bike storage, both exterior and interior. And we will be moving two dumpsters out of the city's right-of-way as requested by the city. So I'll also show you, this is the plaza that we proposed. So this also will serve as an exterior, exterior focal point for tenants to gather. We'll have grills there, there'll be places for people to eat, to hang out. This is going to be accessible, there's a ramp, we're also going to have like a package storage place where the, that people can deliver packages for tenants to gather. This is the rear of the gazebo. It also needs to be fixed, the concrete is falling down. This is another view where you can just see the the ramp in the rear, so this will be accessible. This isn't, this is an I cube. So this here is the leasing area, so this is more towards the rear of the building. So you'll be able to just enter the leasing area off this plaza. There's also benches and gathering space here. And then this is the rear view where you'll access the community room. So these are some spaces that we really hope will enhance the experience for the, for the tenants. So we last priced this project in February, and it was around $16 million. We're about to put it out for bid again in the next week, and we'll expect the numbers in September. We also expect construction costs to have increased because construction raw materials are just increasing everywhere. So we know there's increases in lumber, other raw materials around the world due to COVID. So we think we will probably have some cost overruns. Then next topic is the timeline. So as I said, we've completed the plans, and we've submitted them to the county for permitting. And we hope that the permits will be ready in September. We anticipate closing in October, November. This is sort of the state's timeline that we're going on, and then we'll start construction in November. The project is 18 months long, and as I mentioned, it's going to be done in four phases. So phase one starts October 2021 and ends in August 2022. And phase two starts March 2022 and ends in October 2022. Phase three starts in August of 2022 and ends in March 2023. And then phase four starts October 22 and ends in June 2023. So that's our timeline. And the next topic is the permanent financing and what we're, want to talk to the city about their contribution. So as usual with these projects, it's complicated financing. So we have at least six layers, six layers of financing now. So first, we have a, we have a signed commitment from the county for almost $10 million. So the county's contributed $9.775 million, and also what amounts to a full pilot. The state has issued 4% tax credits and will be receiving $11 million in tax credit equity. The state's going to their loan committee for approval at the end of July. They are also contributing $1.5 million in subordinate financing from the state's housing trust fund and $2.5 million in subordinate financing from the rental housing works fund. Then there's going to be a long-term Freddie Mac loan and the amount of $10 million, that's the first lender. So we are anticipating increased costs. And we are asking that the city of Tacoma Park, as the county has asked, that all municipalities, you know, contribute something. We know that now the city, the city has been contributing a pilot, which we are appreciative of, and is now expired. And we understand that maybe it's easier because of the stimulus funds for the city to contribute money rather than a pilot. So what we're hoping for is a contribution from the city, you know, maybe the amount of $500,000, so that we don't have to cut portions of our project. So at one point, Tlisha asked, we prepare a list of items that the city could support. I have submitted that to the city, but just to name a couple of them. For example, the community center costs, the hard costs, that costs about $300,000. The exterior plaza is about $130,000. The internet in the community room is about $60,000. Moving the dumpsters, the city's request is $20,000. And then expanding the bedrooms, including three and four bedrooms is about $200,000. So that's the cost. And then, so just to wrap up, I mean, as you can see, we've, we've worked hard, we were to prepare for this renovation and to start this year. You know, we, we do want to improve the lives. Um, you know, we, we do want to improve the lives of our tenants, like as we say, MHP is in the business of not just housing people, but also empowering families and strengthening neighborhoods, and you know, that's what this renovation plan aims to do. Um, and I, and I also wanted just to thank everybody because, you know, we couldn't have done this without the cooperation of the city. I mean, everybody has helped us from, you know, the whole council, specifically Tlisha and the staff, um, you know, Kate, Grace, Jean, Jessie, Jessica, and Suzanne and Abcentia, so um, you know, really, everyone's been very cooperative and we're, we're appreciative of that. So uh, that ends my presentation, twenty minutes, which I was allotted, so um, if you have any questions. I'm happy to take questions, Artie can take questions, if not, I'm not offended and that's fine too.
Great, um, thank you so much Stephanie for that. Um, Artie, do you have anything you want to add in addition?
No, I don't, I just, uh, but it, just but in, in a small way, just to say that, yeah, we, we are very grateful to all the cities done, and um, and we're at the finish line, and it is, Stephanie said, this, this tax credit developments take a lot of work and a lot of money and a lot of sources, where if this were a market rate development, they'll just go out and raise they get debt for whatever the incomes can support it and they go get market equity. And, but we, as Stephanie said, we have six sources of financing plus uh tax pilots. And, and it's just, it's a lot of work, but we are all about improving the lives of the residents, and we've talked to them a lot, and these are things like this community room, you know, the people, residents need a place to gather, right? And they have no such place that, you know, we, and they also, so, so, and it's in a lovely community, you know, going down toward the creek and stuff, so so we've been working very hard, so we would, really, we appreciate your help and we would love your support monetary support of this project, and it just shows this partnership that the county and the state want to have on these deals like this, so so we're open to any question you may have, thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, Councilmember Circe, do you wanna say a few words while our colleagues get any questions they have together?
Yes, yes, uh, so I just want to echo my appreciation um for having you all come out tonight and walk through um the uh designs. I know we, we speak monthly, um, but it's always helpful, it's, the more that you all kind of talk through the plans, the more um things kind of pop into my mind. Um, one thing that you mentioned that I know is a priority for members uh of council is providing that wifi access in the community room, and one of the things that I wonder about is, you know, what would be the possibility of expanding that wifi access such that even in some of the common areas, um, residents um on that campus would be able to access um free wifi if needed. Um, you know, we have a number of priorities, um, you know, closing the digital divide is one of them. We are interested in exploring ways that we can create more wifi hotspots, particularly for our residents uh that are, you know, most vulnerable. And so I think that might be something that, 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 you know, I personally would be um an advocate for, you know, providing or lobbying for resources to help with that, so can you talk a little bit more about what you were initially planning in terms of wifi access on that, on the campus and, you know, rural? I mean, I, the devil is always in the details of construction and how expansion could work, but whether or not there could be expansion where folks are even outside in the public space, they may be able to access internet um while they're sitting outside or?
Stephanie, you could go over what, what you have planned and then we can talk a bit more, can, can we broaden it if it's not enough?
Yeah, I mean, what we have planned right now is for access to wifi in the community room. You know, having it in the community room, it, it's something that all the tenants can use, but we have more control over it. So, you know, control over people coming from all over the place and um we recognize if not everyone can afford it in their units, and we have it right there. We don't have any plans for it to be outside, and um I'm actually not sure how that would, how that would work or what the infrastructure is needed for it. Um, but you know, I could certainly explore that, obviously there's the capability, because we have uh the capability of getting you know, access into all the units, so something I could look into.
Yeah, we, we, we could definitely look into, you know, providing it, uh, what, what does it take to provide it in all the common areas and, 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 and then also look into the, the issue of security, so I mean, we could, we, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be really helpful, especially hours in which the um common area, you know, the, the community room would be closed.
Right.
So for those residents that, you know, reflecting on my college days, uh, student, and you tend to just wanna work at midnight.
Right.
So there may be some opportunities to have that internet access um after the community room is closed. But I think that would be something definitely, uh, we can have conversations about as a council. Um, another thing that I know, you know, and this is more for my colleagues, um again, um, we, we met last night and feels like ages ago, but I keep referring back to that housing strategic plan, but you know, revisiting our pilot program process is, you know, is another area that, that, that we have to tackle. Um, and that's another example of, you know, if we have that process in place and it voted on and it kind of knew how we wanted to treat pilots, this would be, you know, another case of where, you know, uh, a pilot or figuring out um what type of pilot we would offer for a project such as this, um, we would be able to leverage that as a tool as well, so um, just wanna kind of put that out there um for members of council, not only as we think about ARPA funds for the various um aspects of the project that have been described thus far, um broadband, you know, making sure we're maintaining affordable quality housing in the city. But also as we start to think about how we deal with our pilot program in the future, um, that is something that I'm, I'm hoping that we will be able to start tackling sooner rather than later. Um, but again, thank you all so much, this is, you know, I, I've heard the spiel, but I really appreciate coming out and sharing with, um, with other members of council.
And I'll just, um, add on, um, I forgot to say in my introduction for, particularly for councilman, um, councilmember Kostic, Dabala and Kovar. One of the reasons we wanted to have MHP um present to us tonight is that we know, um, we're gonna talk about in a little bit with our first budget amendment. Um, ARPA funds, but we know the staff is gonna be working um really hard and diligently while uh we are in recess in August, um, and we're gonna be rolling up our sleeves uh in early September. Um, particularly looking at um the ARPA funds, so I wanted to have, you know, uh, Councilmember Circe and I wanted to make sure that you had the full understanding of this project, um, so that when we come back from recess and start discussing um allocation of more of the ARPA funds. Um, if this is one um that looks like it will uh receive funding through that, that stream, um you, you got the full breadth of the project and what we're talking about here, because it's a pretty, it's an extensive project and it's, it's very exciting. Um, so, uh, Councilmember Dabala.
Yeah, thank you, um, that was really, that was really interesting, was a great summary. Um, and I did note some of the things you mentioned about heat pumps and Energy Star appliances and hot water heaters, et cetera, which raises for me one possibility to look for city staff to look at. Um, in the past, we, we have made some um contributed to eh, to energy efficiency improvements in building specific uh, specific heating systems, for example, in um some of the buildings on Maple Avenue, and so perhaps that's an avenue for looking at a way to, to help out here. Just uh, um, and ARPA funds fits with that too. So I don't know if that was on your list for the city, but maybe
Yeah, I mean, we do
Put that in there, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I could um circulate again the list of like selected features that we thought the city might be interested in after talking to people, I, I don't know, Tlisha, do you, do you have that list of something you could circulate, or I could send it to you or the mayor and you can circulate it to the council?
Yeah, and I think the staff have it, I think, you know, having the staff do an analysis of the programs that we have already set up, like Councilmember Dabala said, as well as looking at the criteria for ARPA funds, that would probably be a more efficient way to go through that list, I think. Because in that way, the staff can come back with some recommendations for us in terms of where different, um where we can tap into different streams of money.
Yep, and Councilmember Dabala, um, you know, uh, the director and deputy director of Works have also started to be looped into the monthly meetings on this project, not just as it, you know, relates a lot with um, the various aspects of, you know, utility work and, you know, construction and, and all permitting and all that good stuff. Um, but I know that there's been conversations about, you know, whether or not um the juice is worth the squeeze in terms of some of our sustainability grant programs, um, and the dollars, I will say, you know, one of the things that we may need to think about, um, because I have another very large multi-family building that is trying to make some um, you know, HVAC and, you know, water heater upgrades is the amount of money that we offer. Um, it's, 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 while noble, not enough. So, um, and so there's a lot of, you know, process that people kind of have to go through in order to get what I think is about ten K, you could do about two projects which equates to about twenty K for, you know, uh, you know, a building that has fifty to a hundred plus units, um, that's, that's a rounding error in terms of the cost of um installing something like this. Um, so we may need to start thinking about, especially as we are talking about our sustainability, um, multifamily building sustainability efforts and initiatives, um, whether or not we need to consider going up on what those funding amounts may be when our multifamily buildings come on the scene and want to do some of those substantial energy efficiency upgrades that are pretty costly because of the size of the buildings themselves.
Um, Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions. One is, you were talking about, um, Stephanie, about the need to relocate the tenants during construction, which certainly makes sense. What's that look like in this area, particularly when you're talking about some people who have certain geographical spots they wanna stay close to if it relates to schools or jobs or so on? Is there, or are there units around that can be used for that purpose?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, um, you know, we, we, we obviously didn't anticipate uh what the world will look like at the time we were doing this, and we will need a lot of units to move people to. Um, you know, we're fortunate in that we own a lot of units, and so we can move people to our properties. Um, we can't move them to any of our properties that are financed with tax credits, because you have to have at least a year at least, but we, we have like some market rate projects and some, uh, some market rate units in our affordable projects, and we have some projects that are not financed with tax credits, so we, so we have some of our own properties. We also, you know, we work with two big management companies that also have properties in the area. And then the third thing, uh, the third point is, uh, we are going to be allowing people to live with friends and family if they want, instead of going into a renting unit, and then they won't have to pay their rent, obviously, and then we'll be providing them with like a, a monthly stipend to incentivize some people who have that option to go and live with someone else, um, to try to decrease the number of units, but, you know it's a, it's obviously, you know, too early, we can't look in July for November for units to rent, but we, we have looked around, um no, there, there are some, and it, it will be, you know, I think it's not gonna be that easy to find units. But we will, because we always do, um, and I think, uh, I think also, you know, some people may will choose to live in other areas temporarily, for whatever reason, for, you know, work, or they just wanna try a new area for a little while or something, so, I mean, I think it will be challenging, but I think, um, you know, we'll, we'll be able to, to meet that need, and we do have this relocation company that's already started looking around.
Two other things, um, so it's all remaining, um uh, for the eligibility is limited to people who are, are below the eighty percent, I think you said, of the area median income, right? So now, you, you said the tax credits were involved and so on, so is that, uh, is there a limit to the number of years that that um eligibility for lower income people applies, or is that permanent, or is there such a thing as permanent, or how does that work?
Yeah, so the tax credits um stipulations are for fifteen years. But generally, like, when we get a loan from the county, the county will, the county's loan will only, um will only be able to keep the county's loan. We have to keep the, the income restrictions for as long as the term of the county loan, which will be forty years. So, um, and also the subordinate, uh, the state subordinate loan, so we'll, the property will be income restricted for, for forty years based on the current finance.
Okay, so even though the tax credit is fifteen years, a longer one, okay, then the last question I have was, um you mentioned the pilot, and I don't know if anyone has this information immediately, we, we could get it later, I suppose, but do we know the annual amount of the pilot and how long we paid it for, or how, how long it was absorbed into our budget for, and when it expired? Because if, if we're talking about spending some other money, it would be useful to know maybe it's not all that different when you add up the number of years that the pilot was in effect. It'd be helpful to understand that, and maybe if we don't have that right at hand, the staff can get that later.
Yeah, so um I can tell you in one minute. So, okay, so the
It's okay if we can get it, if we wanna get it later, I, I don't, I don't wanna stop everything right now. I would just say in general, and, and Councilmember Circe, he said this, this is the kind of thing we've talked about wanting to do in our strategic plan, that is preserving uh affordable housing when we have the opportunity to do it, so we'd have to figure out if we decide to do this, how the money would come from, whether ARPA or something else, but I'd like us to try to find a way to do it, so I'll just say that, thank you.
Well, thank you, um, the pilot is for the tax living years two thousand sixteen through twenty twenty, so that was July one, twenty sixteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and uh we got a hundred percent abatement of the city's taxes.
Or maybe later we can get what that amount was. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I, I have that month, well, in two thousand fifteen, it was about thirty nine thousand.
It was what, forty nine thousand?
Thirty nine.
Thirty nine, okay, thanks.
Councilman Kostic?
Yeah, thank you, um, I don't have any particularly specific questions, but just wanted to say thank you um for the presentation and all the information. Um, and I, I think as Councilmember Kovar said, you know, just getting, getting those numbers are useful, um, and thinking through that and how we might um, uh, look at this, you know, pilot versus um ARPA funds and how, how funding might work for that, and um you know, also just the, obviously, we've all been thinking a lot about some of the maintenance issues on larger buildings with the tragedy that happened in Florida recently. Um, and so I, I do think, um, you know, just ensuring that we have funds for um properties in general um to be able to maintain and upgrade and, and make sure that they're in good condition is so important, um, so thank you very much for the presentation.
So I just wanted to say one thing, so, um so we do need, Stephanie said we're gonna close around November, and, and while we and it'll take eighteen months to, to complete the project, so while we wouldn't need the money uh, when we start, it would be great to have a commitment for the money when we start, and whether the money came in six months later. You know, uh, we, we can, we can find a way to float the money, but we, with our goal or our request is to have a, um, some sort of commitment in Oc, by October-ish, well, when we, at the time we close on the, on the financing, that way, if, you know in October-ish, well, when we, at the time we close on the, on the financing. That way, if, you know, everyone knows what all the expectations are of funding. So that, that would be our, our request, if possible.
And I, I think, Artie, I, I would actually kind of amend that. I would say October one would be the latest. So because we have to start changing our budget and changing our commitments and changing our scope and things like that. So I would put October one at the outside date.
I, I will just let you know that council is in recess in August. And we just received our first tranche of the ARPA funds and looking at what, again, the requirements around that. Our first meeting in September is September eighth. But because of where the Jewish holidays fall, we actually then don't meet the following week for that. So I, we, we can work really hard to do it. I cannot promise at this time, as I've communicated before, that we will meet a October first deadline.
Okay. Okay. Great. Well, you know, I guess if we have some indication, if.
Yeah, I think we can, and again.
So if, then it would help just.
As I, as I mentioned in that past, we have a new city manager coming in, in August. And a lot of moving pieces in the city right now. I think as the council members have noted, preserving affordable housing is one of our three Ps when it comes to our strategic plan for housing. And so, you know, I think we're committed to this. What that is going to actually look like, we'll have to address when we come back in September when we get more information from staff.
Great. Thank you.
But I think it, it makes a lot of sense. And as everyone has said, this is a priority within a priority for us. So great. Um, I don't see any other hands up or anything else. And, and we will make sure to share this recording with our colleagues who are unable to attend this evening. And if there's additional information we need, we'll, we'll make sure to get back to you. But I think I am safe to say, given the conversation that we had today, I can ask our acting city manager to make sure this project is part of the analysis that the staff will be doing regarding funding of projects and that, and ask that we come back to this in early September.
We really appreciate your time and your support.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think also one thing, you know, besides our kind of three-pronged approach, we really value all our partnerships, you know, like our, not just our financial partnerships, which of course are very important, but like everybody that we're working with, right? So the community and you know, working with all the different municipalities, because this is sort of the, a big village process.
Yep. It is. Terrific. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for the presentation tonight. And the city council will be back at seven thirty, all right, for our regular meeting.
All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thanks.